Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting for June 15, 2022. This meeting will also serve as our Finance Authority, our Housing Authority, and our Natural Gas Financing Authority. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Madonza?
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Here.
And Mayor Bernasconing?
Here, thank you.
Mayor Bernasconing, could I ask if there's a reason why our monitors aren't on here? Stephanie in the control room?
Ours are.
Ours aren't.
Okay. All right. Looks like she's coming.
Thank you.
She's coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have the Brenningers here in the audience, and I am from Sun City and they're community leaders. I would like to ask if Dave Brenninger would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He put together a wonderful flag ceremony yesterday at Sun City, attended by hundreds of residents, and we all learned a lot about the reiterations of our flags in 1776.
As you rise, let me just say, on June 14, 1777, the flag was really determined how it would begin to look, and the stars have been added ever since we've added states. So if you would, let's give a pledge of allegiance to a flag. Very few countries do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Very much. I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please review the meeting procedures for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 15, 2022 City of Roseville City Council meeting. If you're present tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they're available at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit the City Council from taking actions on items not listed on tonight's agenda. Speakers wishing to address the City Council may do so by stepping up to the podium. Each speaker will have three minutes during which time comments can be made on non-agenda matters. The maximum allotted time for this section is 25 minutes. Speakers that would also like to address items on tonight's consent, I'm sorry, on tonight's agenda will be given five minutes to express their comments to the City Council. Time will be monitored, and when the red light blinks at the podium, the speaker will be asked to please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you very much for your participation tonight.
Thank you. We will move on to presentations this evening. I have one presentation to give, a proclamation for Juneteenth, and I would like to ask Twana Armstrong if she would meet me at the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
I had the pleasure of saying good morning to you also. We've had long days today. I would like to just share with you a little bit about Juneteenth, so we understand the importance for us, and if you will, that's okay. I'd like to read part of this for you.
Absolutely.
So, whereas President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1, 1863, but the news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States for over two and a half years. On June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and the enslaved were free. African Americans who had been slaves in the Southwest celebrated June 19, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day. Juneteenth is a day of profound weight and power, a day in which we remember the moral stain and the terrible toll of slavery on our country. Juneteenth is also a day that reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from the darkness moments, the darkest moments with purpose and resolve. On Juneteenth, we recommend, we recommit ourselves to the work of equality, equity, and justice, and as we celebrate the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility, the work that we, the work that has been done throughout our history as abolitionists, educators, civil rights activists, public officials, and everyday Americans have helped make the real ideals and principles of our Declaration of Independence. So, Juneteenth marks both the long, hard night of slavery and discrimination and the promise of a brighter future. So, on behalf of the City Council, I would like to proclaim June 19 as Juneteenth and encourage all residents to mark their calendars and celebrate Juneteenth this month as we build a community of real, lasting justice and equality. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your work on this and always being so present in our community.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to say a few words.
I'll leave this for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, esteemed deus, and on behalf of everyone who does the work for this celebration, we appreciate your support. I would like to extend an invitation to each of you as well as the audience.
We are going to be celebrating Juneteenth on Saturday at Johnson Spring View Park. It is a Placer County celebration. Please join us Saturday, 9 to 12, Johnson Spring View Park. We'll have a brief ceremony. We'll have some vendors out there, but it's definitely a time for everyone to come and recognize our theme, which is a seat at the table for everyone. And we want to make sure that Placer County shows up, shouts out to the world that we do have a seat for everyone, everyone who shows up and wants to be a part of this great place in which we live. So, thank you so much for the support, the ongoing support. Look forward to seeing all of you on Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Now is the time for anyone to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. I do have one speaker card here who I can call first, and then anyone can follow. We have Dave Brenninger under public comment. I'd like to come forward.
Thank you again, Mayor, and good evening to everyone in the council and those who are also attending, those who are watching the video. I'm Dave Brenniger. With me, those, my better half, Linda. We live in Sun City, Roseville, and we are just here as residents, but I think I could say, speaking for all 5,000 of our residents, to thank the council for your leadership and especially your ability to stay the course on Measure B. Many of us were very active in our community, step up, step forward, to approve Measure B in order that you would have funds available to help the community with such things, additional police or fire or other staffing, potentially a new Fire Station 8 near our community, as well as just overall the great services you've done. I'm always mindful of the fact that when citizens step forward to approve a sales tax increase, they're investing even further and willingly in their community. In the same way, Linda and I love to travel, perhaps you all do too. We are accustomed to paying a fairly sizable amount of a transient occupancy tax, or it's called the bed tax in the vernacular. I understand that Roseville is quite nominal in comparison to what I'm used to paying elsewhere. Roseville, this city council, the staff, Dom and those before, have done a great job in providing assets for our citizens and our visitors to enjoy this community. And so I think, as you might look forward to the transient occupancy tax, keep in mind, that's the other offset along with the commitment from your residents to then have our visitors help fund and pay for some of the amenities that are here. I know the Placer Valley Visitors Group helps pay for some of the improvements, if not all, at the grounds. There are so many more things this city provides that people come here to enjoy. Just would want also comment, we're really excited that Sun City, and I know other parts of the community, are seeing our streets improved. You may be well aware from having once walked when you elected at large, Sun City, we have these gaping holes that at the time Dell Webb built the streets, it was very wet, and things didn't exactly stay as they should, and they've moved around. Your street department has been out many times, and we are now in the midst of a several year, five-year plan to really improve the streets where appropriate. They've taken them out, laid new asphalt and others. They found other technical ways to fill those gaps very, very well. So, I just thank you for that, because that's really important for our community, and that's part of the image of what Sun City, Roseville strives to be, kind of a key area for this city, just as you provide leadership for the entire community. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a public comment? Okay, we will close public comment and move into the consent calendar and ask our clerk to please announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you. So, tonight we do have items 7.1 through 7.42 for consent calendar and your consideration. So, all matters on consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public requested a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Seeing none, Mayor, we would like to move forward with adoption of items 7.1 through 7.42 on consent. If I may get a motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshelt with a second by Councilmember Madonza. We'll do a roll call, starting off with Vice Mayor's Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
Mayor Bernasconing?
Yes.
Thank you. All items passed unanimously on a 5 to 0 vote.
Okay, and we have three ordinances tonight. We will move into the first one, item 8.1, which is general municipal election, November 8, 2022. And I believe we'll hear from our Assistant City Manager, Megan Shide.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable council members, staff, and public. So, tonight we have item number 8.1, which is our general municipal election. That's being scheduled for November 8, 2022. So, this item comes to you tonight as a routine item, and it comes to you every two years on even-numbered years. So, the city is currently scheduled to host its election on November 8, 2022, and this election is prescribed in our Charter, Article 2, Section 2.02, and Charter, Section 6.01, in compliance with California election laws. The City of Roseville completed its redistricting process in March of 2022. The process concluded with a new district map being adopted and the city boundaries being divided into the creation of five separate and new Electoral Council district seats. In 2020, the city held its first district election with three council members being elected at that time. This year, in 2022, the city needs to hold an election to fill the vacancy of two council member seats in Districts 2 and District 4, as their term will expire in November of 2022. Voters in District 2 and 4 will have the opportunity to elect one member for City Council to fill a four-year term. Voters will also have the opportunity to vote on a transient occupancy tax or TOT hotel measure being considered tonight. The City Council... I'm sorry. Let me see. Nope. I apologize. The City Council will be able to consider that next, and I'm going to have our deputy city manager move on with the next presentation of this particular slide, an item 8.1.
So, you're done with that?
I'm sorry. Did you want me to do that? I apologize. I think I skipped one here. Oh, please accept my apologies. So, the City Council will have the opportunity to have the nomination period open for this election on Monday, July 18, and it will open at 8:00 a.m. It will also close Friday, August 12, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. So, during that period, all nomination documents and election documents need to be obtained and filed with the Roseville City Clerk's office. Appointments will be scheduled for distribution of nomination packets, and forms will be filed with the Roseville City Clerk's office. With that, I'll move on and have our deputy city manager do the next portion of this presentation.
Great. Thank you, Carmen. I'm Megan Shide, your deputy city manager, and I'm going to give some overview of the hotel and lodging tax measure, which will be on consideration tonight for the council to place on the November ballot. Exploring this opportunity came by the staff looking at council strategic plan priorities. So, remaining fiscally responsible in a changing world, maintaining a safe and healthy community, delivering exceptional city services, and investing in well-planned infrastructure and growth, all requires revenue. And that is something that we set out back in 2016, taking a deeper look at this after the city spent years cutting, cutting benefit packages and salaries, looking at our staffing costs. We were looking at ways to save money, and we were trying to do this all in the background before it became very visible to our public. And so, once it became to a point where we needed to make cuts that the public was going to feel and see much more visibly, we engaged in a program with the public to get their input called Engage Roseville. And what we learned from our community in several, many different formats, from surveys to public meetings to eight-month-long Community Priority Advisory Committee sessions, was that the community would rather see us do what we can to preserve services. And with that, Measure B was something that was considered. So, we were looking in 2016 at unfunded liabilities, significant underfunding of our CIPs. We didn't have any general fund or emergency reserves, and we had a lot of pent-up demands from the staff to keep things moving at a consistent level. Engage Roseville had us looking at those service reductions versus revenue increases, and we looked at a lot of different options at the time. We looked at a sales tax, a utility users tax, the hotel tax that we're here to talk about tonight, and also evaluating our fees for services. And we took action on looking at our fees to make sure that they accurately covered the cost, the cost of the city to provide the services, and we also, at that time, recommended taking a look at the sales tax based on the input we got through Engage Roseville. And that's what the council decided to put on the ballots to let the voters decide in 2018, after that two-year engagement process. So, that half-cent sales tax, as Mr. Brenninger mentioned during his public comment, that was a huge win for the city because it really helped us sustain through the pandemic, and it also helped us avoid significant service cuts. It helped us increase funding for all of our liabilities. We were able to create reserves, hire police officers, and support staff to maintain our service levels and to preserve our quality of life. When we started this journey, though, we were clear that Measure B wasn't the thing that was going to solve all of our problems forever. Rising costs, continuing pressures with that are all things that we have to deal with. And so, Measure B was part of the plan, but it wasn't the plan in and of itself. The city has continued to consolidate where appropriate. We use technology to create efficiencies. We ramped up grant opportunities, created new business lines, and we've also kept up with actual costs for service to ensure that growth in our community pays its own way. Growth pays for growth. And the next step is considering a transient occupancy tax, which is the legal word for a hotel tax on nights for overnight accommodations in hotels and lodging. And it's the next step that we're taking, asking the council to consider tonight, to take a look at our fiscal plan and ensure we have the revenues to maintain our service levels now and into the future. So, as we look at the focus of looking at a hotel tax option, one of the things that really resonates is paying fair share and asking our visitors to contribute to the services that they use when they're in our community. So, there's a lot of things that we've done. We have an investment in sports tourism that has really ramped up in our community from the grounds. People have, you know, I know I personally have seen, a lot of people haven't seen it a long time, who've come to our community for the first time ever because their kids have sports tournaments there. Midu is a big host for softball games. We're looking at a long field sports complex in the west part of the city. We have a lot of business and economic growth that's happened recently, really ramped up with the expansion of our healthcare system and technology and new businesses coming to Roseville, which all increased the demand for hotel stays. And then, demand on city services grows with that, with those overnight stays. Our visitors use our public safety services. They use our streets. They use our trails, our parks, our recreation facilities, and we're happy they're here, and we're happy to welcome them here. And one of the ways they help fund for those services they use is through the transient occupancy tax with the hotel tax. Currently, Roseville has one of the lowest. It is tied for the lowest in the region at 6%, and so that's what we're going to take a look at tonight. Comparatively, as we look at the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, the, we wanted to provide a scan of what the region, where the region is at. And we're the lowest, as you can see on here, at 6%. 12% is where the City of Sacramento is, a county, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and Rancho Cordova. 10% is where Lincoln, North Lake Tahoe is, plus they're located in the Tourism and Business Improvement District. There's an extra add-on there. And 10 is also the statewide average. 8% is where Rockland, Placer County, Folsom, Auburn, Colfax, and Lumisar, and 6% is where we are at here in Roseville. Couple very important things to note about the history of Roseville's hotel tax rate. Along with being the lowest in the region, we're also the ones that have been at that rate for the longest time. So, it's, we've been at 6% since 1975. The, it's remained unchanged. Our hotels have increased from four hotels in Roseville in 1975 to 19 today in 2022. So, that actually very well reflects the increase in the demand for hotel rooms in Roseville and the increase in services placed on our city staff. A 10, an increase from 6% to 10% would increase the average room night stay by $4.76 per night. That's based on the ADR of $119, according to Placer Valley Tourism's annual report. And it would also generate an addition, an additional $2.7 to $3 million annually for the city. So, the staff would recommend that vote, that City Council gives voters the option to require overnight visitors to contribute more towards city services and amenities by increasing the hotel tax. So, the vote tonight by the City Council, just so the public understands what we're voting on, it in and of itself does not raise the TOT. That is up to the voters to decide, but the council is deciding whether to give voters that option by placing this on the ballot in November for voters, voters to consider. And with And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our senior deputy city attorney, Jonathan Levi.
Thank you, Megan, and good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jonathan Levi. I'm a senior deputy city attorney in your city attorney's office. This slide is meant to represent a number of timelines that kind of are required for the process for putting this measure on the ballot. The next trigger for us is the impartial analysis, which will be prepared by the city attorney's office. And then there'll be an opportunity for arguments in favor and against the measure, as well as rebuttal arguments from both of those positions with a 10-day examination period following each of those filings. And then, the city clerk has on file the forms necessary for accomplishing all of those different milestones. Next slide, please. The primary purpose for my participation tonight is really to provide a mile-high refresh to council and city staff on the topic of prohibited advocacy during the pendency of an election. And these rules largely are triggered and will apply as soon as and if council approves the items before you this evening. So what we're talking about here, and this is probably a refresh from 2018, is really a shifting line in the sand where on one side you have informational and educational activity, which is allowed. And on the other side of that line, you have advocacy, which is prohibited. Advocacy, unfortunately, is a bit of a moving target and eludes a bright-line definition. I wish I could just say "follow X" and call it good, but that's unfortunately not the case for the majority of instances. For advocacy, it is largely a fact-based inquiry where we have to analyze elements like style, timing, and the tenor of the communication and look at whether or not it tends to compel or encourage a result, if it's inflammatory, if it's emotion-stirring, or if it's argumentative. And I do want to highlight that the line does shift because even factual statements can run afoul and become advocacy based on these elements. The main seed that I want to plant this evening with council and with staff is that in the coming months, should you have any specific questions, concerns, or issues, that my office is always available to address those with you and for you. Next slide, please. So, part of this is knowing when these rules apply. And advocacy prohibitions apply largely in four situational categories. The first, when we are speaking or acting in our official capacities or under the color of title, or when the audience reasonably believes that we're communicating from our official capacity. The second instance is that for folks like our safety groups that wear uniforms, you are always prohibited from engaging in political activity in your city uniforms. And then, third and fourth, our advocacy is prohibited on city time and in connection with city resources like money, our email systems, our social media channels, and our physical facilities. The one point that I want to kind of end this topic with to land this plane is that the consequences can be significant. They can range from personal financial liability to prohibition on future office holding, all the way up to criminal consequences. And I say that more to encourage that if you have any questions, to please make sure you reach out to us. And when in doubt, reach out, which has to be sound legal advice because it rhymes. Next slide, please. All right. Finally, our recommendation from staff this evening is that you approve the items before you and declare the general election and submit this ballot measure to the voters. Please note that the motion for these actions should include a slight modification, removing and omitting just the title portion of... That appears in these items where it says "hotel and lodging tax measure." That portion will be omitted, and that's in with consultation and direction from the county clerk. With that, if there are any general questions, we're happy to answer those. Again, I encourage you to reach out if you have any specific questions. And I turn it back over to council.
Thank you, Jonathan, Megan, and Carmen. Does council have any questions of staff? I'll start on this end. Anything over here?
No.
Okay. Anything here?
I do have one question, Jonathan. Are you able to define, you said, "city/official/staff"? So specifically, where does council fall in that? Are we under the official category?
Correct. You are... When you're acting through your official category, this does not divest you of your individual personal political free speech. You just have to make sure that you are very cautious of the line when you are speaking from your official capacity with your mayor hat on, that you do not engage in anything that comes close to advocacy. Outside of that, personally and individually, you still have your political free speech rights.
Okay, great. Just want to clarify that. Okay. If the council doesn't have any questions of staff, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this item? You can come forward now. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any further deliberations, comments, or...
Do you want to take these in three separate motions?
I'll ask our clerk what she'd like to do.
We can do it all in one motion.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
You had me at 1975. Okay.
Okay. With that, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22-193, declaring a general municipal election be held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, and requesting the Placer County Board of Supervisors consolidate the election with any other election consolidated on said date, and requesting election services to provide... To be provided by the Placer County Clerk to fill two city council vacancies in Districts Two and District Four, and to submit a transient occupancy tax measure to the voters of the City of Roseville. And also, consider adopting Resolution Number 22-194, submitting ballot measure text for the City of Roseville transient occupancy tax or TOT measure to the voters at the November 8th, 2022, general municipal election, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, and directing the city clerk to establish requirements for filing primary arguments and rebuttal arguments regarding the City of Roseville's TOT measure. And last, also, consider adopting an ordinance subject to voter approval, directing amending the transient occupancy tax rate by amending Section 4.24.030 of Chapter 4.24 of Title IV of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Transient Occupancy Tax, be placed on the November 8th, 2022, general municipal election ballot, and make an amendment to each one of the Resolutions 22-193, Resolution 22-194, and the ordinance to omit and remove the "hotel and lodging tax measure" wording from each resolution and ordinance to be in compliance with California Election Code 9051. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Albert, with a second by Vice Mayor Haldeshelt. With that, we'll do a roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes 5 to 0 unanimously. Thank you for allowing us to move forward with our election.
Thank you, and thanks for the information and the presentation. Okay, we'll move on to Item 8.2, the Vernon Street Substation Expansion, property acquisition of 1415 Vernon Street, and budget adjustment. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and councilmembers. I'm Bill Chaplin with the Roseville Electric Utility, and I oversee our key accounts and economic development efforts. As you may know, over the past couple of years, the utility has been partnering closely with economic development. And the item before you tonight is just a great example of what that partnership can really do. Rob has a brief presentation, and after which, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, members of the council. Rob Klein, Economic Development Project Manager. Tonight, staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents related to the acquisition of 1415 Vernon Street for a purchase price not to exceed $500,000, and also to adopt an ordinance authorizing a budget adjustment in the amount of $500,000 from the electric fund to cover all costs associated with the acquisition of 1415 Vernon Street. Roseville is seeing infill development and growth occur within the downtown area. To better serve the customers of the area, Roseville Electric Utility anticipates the need for a future expansion of the Vernon Street substation. An expansion of the substation may include the addition of a second transformer, increasing capacity and reliability in the area serviced by the substation. The current substation site is not suitable for an expansion. And as a result, Roseville Electric has interest to acquire the parcel directly adjacent to the Vernon Street substation at 1415 Vernon Street. 1415 Vernon is zoned light industrial. It's approximately .2 acres, which would double the current footprint of that substation site. Recently, it was discovered that 1415 Vernon was foreclosed on and is currently owned by its lender. The property was listed on the market for five days, from June 1st through June 5th, 2022, for $325,500. Due to the tight deadlines, the listing agent's experience with foreclosures, and the lender's procedure for accepting bids, the city retained the listing agent, Paul Booty of Keller Williams Realty, for dual representation. On June 3rd, the city submitted a minimum offer of $325,500 for the property in as-is condition. And I'd like to note that the $500,000 budget adjustment was in anticipation for the city to make any counteroffers if needed and to cover any costs associated with the acquisition of the property. We estimate that the total cost of acquiring the property now to be approximately $340,000 to $350,000. And I'll provide a brief update since the council communication was submitted on June 6th. On June 7th, the city was informed that our offer, which is contingent upon city council approval, was approved or accepted at $325,500. On June 8th, the city executed the offer acceptance documents. Next, the city would wire $32,550 into an escrow account as our 10% earnest deposit. And with approval from city council this evening, we would... The city would execute the purchase and sale documents. The lender's board would then meet for final approval, and the close of escrow is currently scheduled to occur on June 24th, 2022. In summary, the acquisition of 1415 Vernon Street is critical. This would provide Roseville Electric Utility an opportunity for a future expansion to accommodate growth and better service the customers in the area. Following the purchase of the property, the city plans to demo the site and install fencing for security. And this request would be brought back to council at a later date. So staff's recommendation before you tonight is listed here on the slide. This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. So it's Bill Chaplin with Roseville Electric and Joe Mandel with the attorney's office, who are happy to assist as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information. Is there any questions of council?
I have a question. So this is the property with the greenhouse on it. I believe I drove by the other day. So you're going to raise it and fence it. When do you estimate you'll do that? And then also, when do you estimate you'll actually start developing, expanding?
Right now, we're currently thinking that the demolition and the security of the site would happen fairly quickly, just mainly for liability purposes.
For the summer.
To secure it, correct? In terms of an actual expansion, right now, we believe that's years out. Fortunately, you know, the... Roseville Electric has realized that an expansion would be needed for the substation. And due to the property being under foreclosure, this was an opportune time for the city to move ahead and acquire the site. And so that's why we're bringing this to council this evening.
So it could be years before we actually expand. At least, we've got the property now.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'd just like to make one thing clear as well, just because here we are talking about, you know, the potential of future expansion and capacity and reliability that the substation in the downtown area does provide, obviously, very reliable energy. But with the growth and development that we're seeing, this is just a step to secure property for a future expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This may be a Joe Mandel question. In foreclosure, you purchase the property as-is?
Correct. That's correct.
That's correct.
And I assume this is significantly under value. I'm just making that presumption. Has there been any investigation of the site on any liability we might get... Take on with respect to the purchase of the property?
At this time, we haven't gone forward with any type of analysis or inspections of the property. But that would be the next step, especially if we're to move forward with demolition. We would have some different inspections done.
What's coming?
I'll add a little bit more. Joe Mandel from the city attorney's office, just to answer a little bit more of that. My understanding is we still don't have all of the finalized documents from the bank, and so I anticipate getting all of those tomorrow. And that technically starts a timeline of eight days for us to be able to go out and do inspections and whatnot as needed. But yes, this is a foreclosed home. It's being purchased as-is. Every offer had to have at least a minimum bid of $325,500 as-is. How quickly can you close escrow? You know, is it cash? Is it a loan? That sort of thing. So, yeah. We will still be able to have an opportunity to go in and do inspections, but it's just a short period of time.
So we may... There may be liability, but there also might be a cache of Bitcoin down there, and that would be ours too, right?
I think if there is a cache, it just diminished recently. So I just asked the question if... I mean, the house doesn't look so great from the outside, but if it's a fairly reasonable structure, why not rent it out for a couple of years and use it as a revenue source? Figured I'd ask. That's what I'd do if I was a property owner.
Joe, I can take... I'll take that one. Councilmember, thank you. One, it's really not the business we're in as far as being a landlord and a tenant. I think there'd be a fairly significant expense to that. I think there'd be a fairly significant expense to that. It was always anticipated to buy, to expand, and demolish it as quickly as possible, so it didn't become an attractive nuisance. We didn't anticipate that we would take it and be a tenant. And so just a little more on this, it was always in our five-year plan, and the reason this was expedited was because of the foreclosure, and that was the reason for the tight timeline.
You also run into issues of if the property is currently unoccupied, and so in the future, if the property is occupied, you think about if the government were to remove someone from an occupied property, there would be relocation damages and things like that that would be required. So this is an opportune time again for us to be able to acquire the property.
Any other questions of council?
This is a wonderful opportunity. How often does it happen? Right next to your facility. And price is right, and like you said, you're going to be doing the inspection coming up, and you'll see if this is really as good as we hope it is. It sounds good, but you need to check that out. And we have, we have good utility service there right now, but this plans for the future. So this is, this is a very good thing, and it's good that both we have economic development and on our electric department working together and finding this.
Okay. If the council doesn't have any other questions of staff, I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item? Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council to see if there are any other questions before we take action. Okay, I think we're ready.
Thank you. So the city council will consider adopting resolution number 22-200, authorizing the execution of any and all documents related to the acquisition of 1415 Vernon Street, and adopting ordinance number 6523, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, and declaring the ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure. With that, may I get a motion, please?
Go move.
Thank you. I think I have a motion on the floor by council member Ricucci, with a second by council member Albert. We'll start off real call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci, and Mayor Bernusconing.
Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our big one here this evening, our extra big one, item 8.3, which is our, our budget, our City of Roseville Fiscal Year 2022-23, Citywide Budget Position Allocation Schedule, Roseville Housing Authority Budget, and the Roseville Finance Authority Budget. And we have our city manager this evening, who will give us a presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you. Council, as you mentioned, Dominic Casey, your city manager. I am pleased to be here tonight to preside a few budget items, actually not just our citywide budget. As soon as a presentation pops up, I will share it. Okay, and I'm not Scott Penningill, our budget manager. He fell a little bit ill today, and so you get me. I don't know if that's good or bad.
We've got to keep you sharp, so.
That's right. That's right. Okay, so the agenda, next slide, please. On the agenda tonight, this evening, we do have a condensed summary of our citywide budget, our housing authority budget, and our Roseville Finance Authority budget. And then at the end of each, or not really at the end of each one, but at the end of the presentation, I'll conclude with a recommendation to formally adopt all three of these budgets, which we've, as I will share, we've heard at length over the last several months. And I'd like to begin with the citywide budget. The budget was the result of extensive budget process this last, that began in February. The process included presentations on the budget development calendar, on city liabilities, on capital, on our capital improvement program, our financial policies, department presentations, as well as the city council goals workshop, and the budget hearings that occurred here on May 31st. And also included on this slide is an overview of the annual citywide budget process that highlights not only will this budget process not stop at adoption, but it continues to go on throughout the year with regular monitoring and updates and reviews, as well as planning for the future. And as always, we want to make sure our budget process is inclusive. It includes a focus on awareness and outreach. It included the development of our, well, it's not really new. We've done a couple now, but our budget brief document, which really takes the budget, breaks it down into bite-sized pieces so we can make it understandable, and it makes the budget information also widely available to the public. So we share this on all of our social media platforms, as well as all of our community meetings, because the outreach to our, our community is important and something our city council values, and as staff, we recognize that, and so we're ensure to get that out. And then finally, our budget hearings, where we included an overview of the budget that were presented by each of our city departments. The proposed budget tonight supports the city's mission and goals in a fiscally responsible manner. It also serves and funded, excuse me, services funded in the proposed budget include fully staffing the police beat in West Roseville, additional animal control staffing, and also a development of real-time crime center, which we've been hearing a little bit about in our, in our police updates. It also expands our graffiti abatement program, and it invests in capital projects such as the Roseville Sports Complex, our renovation at Weber Park, and also Johnson Pool. It also supports business growth, and it looks to ways to help address homelessness in the community. Paying down our unfunded liabilities is also a priority, and making sure that we have an economic stabilization and emergency reserves, really taking, making sure that not only does this budget take care of today, but keeps an eye on the future. Oh, you got ahead of me, so we can stay there on the revenue types. The citywide revenue budget total is $788 million. This pie chart breaks down the revenue by type of fund. The largest slide in this pie, the slice of this pie, is the city's enterprise funds, which includes Roseville Electric, the environmental utilities, which include water, wastewater, and solid waste, as well as Roseville Transit and Adventure Club program. These enterprise funds make up 56% of our city fund, citywide fund. The next largest slice of the budget fund type is the general fund, which consists of 28 of the city, or 28% of the city revenues, and this funds police, fire, parks, recreation, libraries, as well as public works and parts of development services. And the remaining is 16%, and this revenue consists of special districts, development fees, as well as our golf course funds. Now our citywide expenditure, on the next slide, there we go, citywide expenditure budget is $767 million, and the proportional share of each of the major spending category included in the proposed budget is very similar to what we've seen in prior years with, with minimal growth. Salaries, wages, and benefits, as well as materials, services, and supplies do make up a majority of our spending plan, and salaries, wages, and benefits make up 35% of our budget at $272 million. And the next largest spending category is materials, services, and supplies, which is 31% or $239 million, which is very typical of a service-oriented organization. 16% or $119 million of the proposed budget is dedicated for our capital projects, and 10% or $75 million will be spent on the electric of our purchase power and supply. The remaining 8% of the spending plan, as indicated in the other category, includes things like spending for debt service and transfer into our other funds. Next up is our staffing levels and our staffing allocations. You can see, this is for our citywide. We're recommending that we have an increase of 43 positions in the budget from 1,277 to 1,320, and this growth represents about a 3% increase in our overall staffing levels. The largest staffing increase are in police, and parks, and environmental utilities. And almost all, if not most, of these changes are directly related to growth, increased services, or a mandate from the federal or state government. Listed also is our five-year capital plan, and the proposed budget is $105 million for this next fiscal year, with appropriations with the majority of the projects in parks, recreation, libraries, and the utility departments. These projects include roadway rehabilitation, funding for a regional sports complex, and Johnson Pool upgrades. Staff have also incorporated departments' long-term capital planning over the five-year capital improvement program, which are included in this budget, with almost $400 million in capital spending over the next five years across the respective departments. Now I'd like to move on to the general fund. As you can see in the general fund, the total general fund operating revenue is almost $212 million. The pie graph shows the general fund revenue contributions from each source, with a Bradley Byrne sales tax, and Measure B sales tax, and property tax revenue making up almost 80% of the general fund. The remaining 20% is made up of licenses, permits, the electric franchise fee, and also charges for services and other, other taxes. And it's always nice to kind of see how that money is spent throughout the general fund. As you can tell from, from this chart, is a little breakaway from your traditional pie chart, but really just breaks out how we, how we support the services in the general fund. Largely support the police department is 26% of, of the overall budget, which breaks down to about $55 million. The fire department is 20% of the budget, which is roughly $42 million, and then followed up by parks, recreation, and libraries, which makes up about 15% of the general fund, which is $31 million. And then you see the balance of the fund is dedicated to general government, as well as, as public works and portions of development services like code enforcement that aren't funded directly through fees for service. The other categories include transfers to funds in those CalPERS discretionary payments we talk about when we're buying capacity into the future, making those one-time payments Now next, I'll briefly cover the staff. The staff is proposing the annual citywide budget ordinances. There are two ordinances to consider, which are really tied to making us more accurate and more efficient, and we're recommending two changes. The first is section 3.16. This new section will authorize the city manager to increase revenue and appropriations for city council-approved bond issuances. The second is section 3.17. This section will authorize the city manager to decrease revenue and expenditure budgets for development services for fully reimbursable development projects to match the actual amount of revenues that are received and expenditures that are incurred within a fiscal year. These items are both recommended to improve year-end financial reporting, aligning the budget with actuals, which will give us more accuracy at year-end, reflecting these services are fully funded and reimbursed by developers. And with these, both, both of these options, they, from the time they set, they do move, and they move within the quarter and within the year, and so it'll give us the ability to move them, to adjust them, so they're accurate at the time of reporting. And now we're moving out of the, the citywide budget and general fund budget into the, one of two of the additional budgets we'll be looking at or approving this evening. And the first is moving on to the housing authority budget. The housing authority budget includes funding to administer the housing choice voucher program, provides rental assistance to low-income, disabled seniors and veterans that are in Roseville and Rockland. This ensures housing and economic self-sufficiency for 795 houses, and it infuses almost $6.8 million into the, into the federal funds, into the local economy each year. It's important to note that housing authority receives its, its funding from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. The housing authority budget includes $6.8 million in federal HUD revenues to be spent on the rental assistance programs, and in terms of administrative revenues and expenditures, the budget includes $857,000, roughly $858,000 in funding from HUD, and $104,000 for administration fees to cover the City of Rockland and repayment agreements that also support program and administrative costs. The funding provides support for salaries, wages, and benefits totaling $659,000, and other operating costs totaling almost $198,000. The variance between the available administrative revenues and expenditures is approximately $82,000, and it's funded by a contribution of the general fund, which we've been doing for several, past several years. Just for some perspective, it was about $76,000 last year, so modest growth this year with supporting the administrative costs. Now lastly, I'll provide a quick update for the finance authority. And just for a quick reminder, the Roseville Finance Authority is a separate legal entity that is established to provide financing for city capital improvement projects, and this fiscal year, the expense for the budget for the Roseville Finance Authority totals approximately $3 million, and this budget includes $2.4 million for debt service payments that go to the Corporation Yard, which is a city facility, to the golf courses, both golf courses, as well as 316 Vernon Street, which are the city offices and where Sierra College is across the street for repayment on, on the building. The budget also includes a $400,000 repayment from the citywide park funds for the completion of Harry Crab Park. So as I mentioned earlier, there are three different budgets here this evening that we'll be, be discussing and be, be taking action on, so it includes three recommendations. The first, adoption of the ordinance approving the fiscal year 23 citywide budget, as well of out-of-state travel requests, new vehicle requests, and citywide position allocation schedule. Additionally, the second resolution approving the Roseville Housing Authority's budget for fiscal year 23, and the final resolution is approving the, the Roseville Finance Authority budget for fiscal year 23 as well. I know this was very brief, and it's mostly because I think you guys have probably heard the similar presentation 15 times over the last six months, so I did try to keep it brief. But if you do have any questions, happy to stand for those. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and council.
Thank you for your presentation. I think that is really important to note, is that we have been talking about this at length and have had input from our community for months, input from staff, and so this is just really our final discussion and stamp that we'll move forward with it. So with that, do any of our council members have comments or questions of our city manager?
Maybe just.
Go ahead.
I, I really appreciated that you made the, the small little booklets for the community, because it really was precise. People could see it. I brought it to where I saw people and said, you know, look, it's really easy to understand, and it tells you what, how the city is using city funds, and I think that's really good. I also appreciate the booklet that we originally got. It was very concise. It told you all the people that helped participate and, in different departments, and so you can see that this is, not that you, you say it all the time, that it's a whole group that's doing it, but it actually tells you who, who is doing it, and who are, who's on council, planning commission. It was, I, I thought that was really, gave me a feeling of really a completeness, and I was hoping that that would, if I was a member of public and was looking at this, you could say, gee, a lot of people are working on, on our, our budget and, and plans for the, for Roseville. So now, I like your presentation. Thank you, Dominic, and because, as our mayor said, we've, we've gone over it in, on a lot of different details on, on different parts of it, but this put it all together. So thank you.
And mayor, if I could just thank staff for, you know, their briefings, but I also think it's appropriate to recognize that, at least probably for a decade, that the city council, in partnership with our professional staff, has really been fiscally prudent and managed the city in a really, really pragmatic way, and that's reflected in where we are today. We don't know where we're going to be tomorrow, but you know, I think I want to recognize that I know council member Albert and councilwoman Ricucci and, and others, prior to any of us being up here, we're certainly keeping a keen eye on the city finances and doing it in partnership with our professional staff. So I just want to recognize folks.
Thank you.
I also think that it's important to point out that this is built upon a strategic plan, and everything in the budget points to our priorities as a city. Everything has to, to match the strategic plan, so you start with a plan, and then you set your budget to it, and I appreciate that we work that way, because that's how really good corporations work, and I think it says a lot for our city to be able to follow those kinds of standards and let the strategic plan lead the budget. So appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Good point. I would just like to say that, you know, this is probably one of the most important things that we do as a council, and I think that this, I think that we're all really proud of this budget, and it's a reflection of our priorities. It reflects our healthy financial position. It reflects our desire to be financially prudent and plan for our future. I mean, everything is covered in here, and from our capital improvement projects, what we can do with housing, and as Pauline mentioned, you know, you, your staff really did an amazing job, whether it was the at-a-glance, it was the full, well, there were several different versions, depending on what tolerance level you had for reading, but even the position changes spreadsheet, I think one of the things that I'm most excited about, and I think that my fellow council members are too, are the additions that we're making to our police department and the investment there. I mean, that is really huge for our community, and I will just share that, you know, 20 years ago, when I was on a school board and all the years I've served, it's not fun when you don't have a budget that looks like this, and you're talking about letting people go, or having to close schools, or close programs, but we have heard from our residents that they do value the quality of services that they get, and so I, I'm really proud of the work that we've done together. And unless anybody else has anything to add, I'd like to ask that we have a motion and open for public. Thank you. Most important, is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item? I'll open it up for public comment. Oh, good. Good evening.
I really just wanted to get up here and say hello, everyone.
Hello.
Name, rank, and serial number, correct? Yeah.
Whatever you'd like to give us.
Well done. My name, Muriel Moore.
Yes, thank you.
City of Roseville is where I live, okay? And this is to city manager Casey, yeah. The 2021-22 budget, okay, it would, to me, it would have been good to reflect, and if I can remember, and sometimes that's, that always good, the present budget is $767 million. Is that about right? Yeah. Okay, and the general fund is 28% of that? Was that from the general fund, it is?
Any answer?
Yeah.
The general fund is, is roughly $212 million versus the $788 is the citywide budget, which includes the utilities.
Okay, I, I understand that, but of the $767 million, okay, of that budget, it's 28% of, I thought, 28% is what sticks out to me. I thought you said it was 28% of the, and maybe I'm wrong, but my point, what I'm trying to get to, it would have been good to have the 21-22 budget, budget that was there, so that you could see where the increases or decreases were in general fund, or any of the other allocations that were going out, especially to city employees like crossing guards, okay? Where we fit in? Was it an increase, or is it a decrease? That's what I'm trying to say. Am I making sense to you?
Yes.
You are making sense.
Thank you for your comment. And I believe in other iterations that we've gone through over the last six months, we have had that information, but this is, was not a full presentation of the budget, but thank you for your comment.
I have another one, okay? Am I on a time limit? The other one was on the housing, the agreement with City of Rockland, okay? Just a brief, what does that entail? What is that about?
So this evening, it's just public comment. So go, if you want to make your public comment, and then we can follow up with you and get your answers, yes.
I understand. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to make a public comment on our budget on this item? Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the council if we're either further deliberations or if we're ready for a motion.
You only have three minutes to make this motion.
Thank you. With that, the city council, acting as the board of directors for the Roseville Housing Authority and for the Roseville Finance Authority, will consider adopting Resolution Number 3-22, approving the annual budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and consider adopting Ordinance Number 6522, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, adopting budget control policies, adopting an appropriations limit, adopting the budget for the successor agency of the Roseville Redevelopment Agency, and to be effective immediately as an urgency measure. And also consider adopting Roseville Finance Authority Resolution Number 2-22, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023. May I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshell, with a second by Councilmember Rakuchi. With that, we'll start real call with Vice Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have item 9.1, which is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. It's the 2022 weed abatement. And we will hear from our Fire Division Chief, Jason Rizzi. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Jason Rizzi with the Fire Department. I'm joined by Chelsea Zine, one of our fire inspectors, and also Eric Dexter from our Park Recreation and Libraries Department. The weed abatement program is just a lot more than just one department, so we wanted to give you just a brief presentation on what it entails before we hold the public hearing to receive any objections per the government code. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea.
So every year, we send out letters to all of our vacant owner parcels to encourage them to abate their weeds or put in fire breaks along their property. Each year, just kind of what that means is that a vacant parcel is an undeveloped parcel. It is not anything that has a home or a building on it. All that falls under code enforcement. All those would be taken care of by code enforcement. That's basically it for kind of my portion.
First, we have a great relationship with the Fire Department, so we work together in a lot of ways. And we handle these fire issues in really three ways. We do it through our fire breaks with our contractors. Currently, they're working six days a week. They're right at it. And then we do it with our internal team that takes care of some of those fire breaks. And then, of course, our four-legged employees, the goats that you have. Currently, in the city, we have three herds throughout the city. If you want to know where they're at, you can check them out on the goat tracker through the city website. And that's kind of the main ways we address our fire break.
Great. And I just want to add, you know, when the weather changes and the summer months come and it's 105 degrees and we have, you know, 20 knot winds, this issue becomes very important. And it just, you know, really highlights the importance of the abatement program we do to minimize the impacts of fire in the fire season months. So with that, we're happy to take any questions or open the public hearing.
Thank you very much. So I opened the public hearing, and then we'll take questions of the council. Are there any questions of staff from our, my colleagues?
Could you just remind us of the deadline for all the abatement to be completed?
So the deadline is generally, we like to say July 1st, because we want all of those pieces cleaned up before the Fourth of July holiday and, you know, the fireworks that are permitted within the city, the safe and sane fireworks, and also the public chute. So it's really important for July 1st, when the weather changed, we get real busy and we want to make sure to minimize the impact of some of those parcels that have weed. So we will be really working hard over the next two weeks to finish that up. But we're in a very good position, as Eric noted.
Any other questions of staff?
I'm really glad we have you and that you do this. I want to encourage our residents too, if they, without being the large parcels, but there's so much dry grass and tall grass that, you know, look behind your back fence and realize that maybe you might have a lot of grass. And if it ever catches fire, that old dry fence of yours is going to go up, maybe with your house or your neighbor's house. This is, I'm, you know, I'm glad what you're doing, and I'm glad you're here with us and saying this so that if you're at home and, you know, thinking that that's the only thing we're worried about, we're worried about everybody's weeds because you see it all over Roseville. And you want to make sure that, you know, other people are, put themselves in, and think about it, that they have a lot to do to put their weeds down too.
Okay, I do have a question. This has come up before, and I think it's important that we understand. So Roseville has a lot of open space, and then the tall grasses, I don't know, start to grow. What is the policy on cutting those down? Because I feel like they, you want them to grow a certain length before you're cutting, recutting, going back over and over. Can, so can you just explain that?
Absolutely.
Because I feel like we do hear from residents, they want them cut, you know, right when they go to two or three feet. So what's the process?
So some of those areas, and Eric can correct me, are like riparian open space areas where we do not cut their habitat. What our municipal code and our weed abatement standards say is 30 feet from a combustible structure, be it a building or a fence. That's the fire break that we have to employ. So when you think about those larger parcels and those open space areas, that's, you know, kind of habitat, and we don't necessarily go in and clearcut that. And I don't know if Eric wants to add anything to that.
No, you hit it, you hit the target.
Okay, so it's really the 30 feet?
Correct. 30 feet from any combustible structure.
So mayor, again, a follow-up. So this list includes residential or...
Not residential. So we only send out to all of our vacant parcel owners, so a lot that is undeveloped, there is no house. So maybe a lot of our areas on the west plan that, you know...
That's why I saw Nicole G. on there. I saw Conference Center Drive, which, you know...
Yeah, and so the issue is sometimes that our letters, we're getting information from the county, and it's not always the most current information, but we're doing our best to track down that and update it as needed.
So the process is you send this, and they have 30 days to rectify the situation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, any other questions before I open up to public comment? I'll open it up to public comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item? Okay, Seena, I will close public comment. I'll close the public hearing. Councilmembers have any other questions or comments before we hear a motion? Okay, I think we're ready.
Thank you. With this, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22196, ordering the destruction or removal of all weeds, dirt, rubbish, and rank growth in the city of Roseville, and overruling any and all objections thereto. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Rakuchi, followed by a second with, by Councilmember Alverd. With that, we'll start real call with Vice Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. I'll open up to one last public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Now would be your time to come forward. Seena, I'll close public comment. And does our city manager or city attorney have any comments for this evening?
No further reports, mayor.
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, great. I don't mean great that you don't have any comments. We do like hearing from you, but thank you, I should say. And any other comments from my colleagues before we wrap up?
Maybe just a couple. It's been really excitingly busy the last couple of weeks with being out in public and seeing activities that we really haven't seen in three years. And we talked about staffing. We, here at our budget, we were able to see this police swearing-in ceremony at Roseville High School in their theater. There was a swearing-in of nine new police officers, and then there was swearing-in of 13 professional staff, and also officers that received promotions, and also the volunteers, thanking them for the many hours that they volunteered there, either in, at the police department or out in the community doing police service. So that was, that was nice. I had Vice Mayor Haldeshell was there, so was Scott Alverd. So it was, it was, it was nice. Some of these I don't want to say because all of us have done it, but it was, that was just so nice to see the families. And because, as they were mentioning, there were other people that were hired in this period of time, but they didn't have family to come, not, not in that kind of service. It was just kind of like, you know, welcome aboard, you know? But, and the best you could do during COVID times. So I'm glad to see other things. I'm also glad that I attended Boys and Girls Club here in Roseville. They had a ribbon cutting. And this is the first time that Boys and Girls Club has now come to Roseville. And it was, it's in, in an area that had facilities for children, but it outgrew it and started many years ago when the land was donated and to where it is now. So they're going to have a summer program. It starts like, I think, in about a week, for a couple of weeks, and then they'll close down. And then when school starts again, they will have afternoon, after-school programs. And they're calling the center here in Roseville, Union Pacific Railroad Clubhouse. So that was kind of, it's very close to the railroad. It's a couple of blocks away from the depot, and so that was pretty apropos. So that was very exciting to see it. When you go in to see it, it's absolutely beautiful. The kids are going to have a very nice place to play, do homework, and just enjoy themselves. And just one more, I'd say, there was also an Eagle Scout here ceremony about a week ago, and this young man, it was very interesting because his father is in the military, his father is also a past Eagle Scout. But it's like, it, for him to get it, he was saying, I believe he, in, in like 10 years, they moved seven times. So he was moving a lot. And he wasn't even in the Scouts until he was 11, and he didn't do the weed blows and Cub Scouts. He started as an older kid. And how he was able to complete all the, all the different steps that you need to do in his project was at Roseville High School. So it was, it was interesting to see, you know, if you really want to do it, you really can, and with a lot of help with their communities and where they, where areas they stayed. And it really helped him to do this, and, and it was, it was fun to see that. And we had Kevin Kiley there giving him an award for, you know, his achievement, as well as, they had me say a few words for the city council of being there and very honored this young man in his, in his journey.
Just one real quick comment. I've noticed over the past couple of months that there's been an increase in various neighborhood and incident Facebook pages, active incident pages and things. And I just want to remind our residents that our city website is a great resource for items. We just did an overhaul of that not too long ago. But also our police, our fire, our utilities, they have their own Facebook pages. And any active incidents or things that are going on, they always post incident updates on those Facebook pages, and it's also linked to our website. So I've gone on several of these pages, and, you know, most of this information is not right. These are a lot of opinions, and, you know, they're not factual. And I just want to remind our residents that if you are concerned about something like a power outage, or concerned about something that's going on in the city, we do have our own Facebook pages for individual departments, and our website has contact information and things about what's happening and, you know, factual information from our people who are actually knowledgeable about what's going on, because we're doing that work here in the city. So I would encourage, if you're looking for that information, to, to like our Facebook pages, follow us, or go right to the city website, and there's links to the various departments if you're looking for certain information. But, you know, I think it's important, everybody has factual information, you know, and that we don't spread misinformation. So I think the city does a really good job, and we've worked really hard, our departments have worked really hard to make sure that the information is updated and that we update the public as quickly and as often as possible on various events from power outages and other things in the city. So I just want to remind our residents that we do have that, and we do have our official pages, and would direct them to that if they're looking for information instead of mining through other non-city-related pages that might not be their correct information. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Summer solstice, June 20th, Father's Day, June 19th. A lot of transportation. I was on the Capitol Quarter Joint Powers Authority meeting today. I'll be in a SAG-AG meeting on transportation issues tomorrow on behalf of the mayor. Next week is Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. What day did I say it? Let's see, the 21st or the 22nd? Tacos with a Cop at Weber Park. Did I mention Green Acres is really under, it's blooming, right there off of Galilee. And then on June 25th, we're going to have a rededication of the Bulljon Playground Equipment, and it's a real, really uplifting story of a, of a community that came together and worked with the city, and the city being responsive to their needs. And then tomorrow, I'm talking to Rotary about drought. So, thanks.
Good stuff. All right. Councilmember Alverd?
Well, downtown Tuesday nights is back. If you, we've missed it for a few years because of COVID, but I hear it has been great. I will be there next Tuesday. Every Tuesday night for, I think it's through June and July. And I encourage you to go. They've got great bands, lots of very interesting vendors. The stores are all open on Vernon Street. And I've heard some really good feedback, that it's been really good. They came back with, and a great, a great kids playground area, lots of things to do for children. Early June, I attended the Sacramento Host Breakfast, which is an event that happens, hasn't happened in a few years, but normally happens every year. And it's pretty much people from all over the state come to Sacramento, and we talk about state stuff. And Lenny, our Lieutenant Governor, was one of the keynote speakers, and we had California Chamber of Commerce there. But it was just, it was kind of uplifting. You know, California's got its issues, but it's still a great place to live, and there's a lot of really good stories still, a lot of neat economic stories. I mean, we live here for a reason. And so I kind of walked out of there feeling pretty proud, just, you know, a good reminder of some of the good things that are happening in our state. And they kind of go hand in hand, the GSEC, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, they had a board retreat, which is basically just an all-day meeting down in Sacramento. But it was another very uplifting story, talking about the Sacramento region, which includes us. And the benefit of, you know, we've got excellent housing, we've got excellent education. The quality of life around here is fantastic compared to many places in the United States. And, and they were just talking about some of the big economic wins that we've had, some great businesses that have come here, that have expanded here, and the potential of bringing more. And, and so I really, I very much enjoyed listening to the stories of some of the really big businesses and why they came here to the area, and those that are just starting to explode and really grow. And again, we've got a lot to be proud of. Tonight, a few of us went to the Rayleigh's One. It was kind of a preview tomorrow morning. 9:30 is the big opening. It's at the corner of Fittment and Blue Oaks in Western. It's the first grocery store in Western Roseville, the real western part of Roseville out in the boonies. So now we got our, now we have a grocery store. But the Rayleigh's One's a really cool concept. I encourage you to go check it out. There's only four or five of them, and it's very health-oriented, all kinds of, I mean, just wonderful offerings they have there. I'm drinking my Drink Coffee Do Stuff coffee. That's the name of this thing. It's a mild, it's, it's great. It's, just everything in there is pretty cool. So I encourage you to go check it out, celebrate with the community tomorrow, 9:30. And that's all I have.
Is it 9:30 or is it 9 o'clock? I thought it was 9.
It's 9:30 for the general public.
I think it's 9.
9:30, 30.
General public, 9 for the ribbon.
They're not cutting a ribbon, though.
Yeah, we'll be there, we'll be there tomorrow morning. Yeah. Just a few things, maybe three things to share. I was invited last week to go speak to the Sacramento leadership through the Metro Chamber, and they, their program is just getting underway. And there was representation from Elk Grove, Folsom, Citrus Heights, and a couple other. I bet I was the only one from Placer County, and just got to meet with them. It's much like the leadership program that our chamber puts together. Those graduates from the Roseville Chamber leadership will graduate tomorrow evening. And so if you haven't already made reservations, or you can get out there and at least say hi to them, it'll be... It'll be 6:30 at Sierra View, and I'll be speaking to the graduates there and encouraging them to get involved, enjoy to board or commission, and commend them on the commitment that they've made. And I mentioned it briefly, but yesterday, last night, was the first-ever Flag Day event that SunCity put together last last night. It was attended by hundreds of their residents, and just really interesting, the patriotism, and as they went through the flag that all the different iterations of the flag, they handed everyone a small flag, and as they new states were entered into the union, and they named off those states, they asked everybody to raise their flag or wave their flag if they had lived in that state. So every state was covered. It was it was really a nice event that they had never done it before, and as we know, the gatherings are just the big group gatherings are just starting to happen again. And Bruce did mention a park dedication. We have another one coming that same Saturday, but I'm at a loss for which one it is.
Isn't it Hayden?
Is it Hayden? North Hayden. Okay, so we've got a couple more park dedications coming, and then for our residents, you can't miss our downtown parade on the Fourth of July, so I know we'll probably all be there for that. So on that note, I would like to adjourn the meeting and just remind those watching, we've already done public comment.
Public comment.
Well, I was going to talk to the county, the city council about that, because there was no I tried to sign on at the beginning. There was no way to register for this meeting after it started at all, and I was listening for the park before that park.
We don't have a virtual...
We don't do that.
We don't have a virtual platform, sir.
So our next meeting is July 6 at 6:00 PM, and I hope you all have a safe Fourth of July. Thank you very much.